Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning and welcome to the first online meeting of the Definitive Map and Statement of Public Rights Away Subcommittee. This is a formal public meeting and the audio feed of this meeting is being broadcast via the county council's website. I'd also like to welcome the members of the public who are listening to this online. Before we begin, I would like to confirm who is present and any membership changes. Steve Blagg, Democratic Services Officer, will ask members to indicate their presence after their name is called.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, members. Could I please ask you to confirm your presence when your name is called out in alphabetical order as follows? Tom Ashton.
Present.
David Bralesford.
Present.
Ian Fleetwood.
Present.
Ian Fleetwood.
Present.
Colleen Matthews.
Present.
Hilton Spratt.
Something's gone wrong. Present.
Thank you. And the officers present, Chairman, are Chris Miller, Team Leader Countryside Services, and Karen Park, Senior Definitive Map Officer.
Present.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, you're on mute. Chairman, you're on mute.
Thank you, Steve. I'll start again. If during the meeting a member would like to ask a question or raise a point, they're requested to use the chat function and to just write 'speak' as a comment. When invited to speak by myself, members should unmute their microphones and switch on their video. When members have finished speaking, they should mute their microphone and switch off the video. Members are requested to indicate using the chat function if they are temporarily or permanently leaving the meeting. If members lose connection during the meeting, it's recommended they end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin via the meeting link provided earlier. If a member does lose connection, I will pause the meeting for a period to allow that member to rejoin the meeting. If the member has not rejoined the meeting by the time the chairman recommences the meeting, the member will be treated as having left the meeting during the period of their absence. Steve, do we have any apologies and do we have any replacement members, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I have received an apology from councillor Sarah Parkin and I have been informed that councillor Lindsay Corey has been appointed to the vacancy on the committee by the Chief Executive until further notice. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Members are reminded, we're just going to do declarations of councillors' interests and just, members are reminded, they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest forms. If any member would like to declare an interest, please state in the chat by typing 'speak'. No, I think we're okay there. Item three on the agenda: minutes. I move the minutes of the meeting of the Definitive Map and Statement of Public Rights Away Subcommittee held on 1st July 2019 as an accurate record. Can I have a second to my motion? Please indicate for...
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you, Hilton. Did anybody have any comments on the minutes? No. Need another one? Item number four. Appeal against prioritisation of DMNO 11 Belchford, posed addition of a public bridleway over Ingham Lane. Chris, can I ask you to present the report and respond to any questions, please? I'm passing the chairmanship temporarily to you. Can I ask members to consider the appeal on whether to upgrade the priority of the modification of the case? That's what we're coming to the view. So Chris is going to lead the next section. It's our role to decide if we want to upgrade the priority. Chris, go.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, so hopefully you've seen a copy either over the email delivery or you've got, the chairman or the vice-chairman has a hard copy. I'm going to try and share my screen with you so we have a copy of the report as we go. So if you could just bear with me one second. Hopefully we will soon see a copy of the appeal. If not, I'll just have to run through it. Can anyone on, just, Steve, could you say whether or not it's being shared yet? I can't see.
Chris, I can see the covering agenda.
Right, okay.
Only.
So is it moving now?
Yes.
Okay, that's more to do with my capabilities with IT than anything else. I'm having to use two screens to be able to do everything at once and I'm a luddite. Okay, so we should now be coming towards the minutes of the last meeting and here is the current report. Okay, so we have before us a case which was originally applied for back in 1990 by Belchford and Fulhamby Parish Council. It was worked on quite a considerable number of years ago, however, back in those days we only had one officer for the whole county and of course progress would be necessarily slow in that regard. We were also at that time in the habit of, once an objection was received, of not progressing it to the Secretary of State for completion. Obviously 20 years later, 30 years later, we're in a completely different place and we deal with things through to a complete conclusion now, one way or another, however it turns out. As you know, our priority system is based on date order of receipt and this is clearly one of the older cases now from 30 years ago. As a consequence, you will note that it's currently case number 34 of the caseload of 152 current outstanding applications, which means it's quite near the top in general terms. It should also be noted that the top 31 applications are already being worked on. So in essence, this is number three in the awaiting list as opposed to being number 34 because the 31 cases ahead of it are already ongoing. So as soon as those cases start to be being resolved, our available officers will pick up the next case and then the next case and the next case. So it shouldn't be that long before this one would be being picked up. So that's just some background there. You'll have read in the report about what priority the case currently holds and as I say, it's still based on that date order of receipt. With the original application, we received a number of user evidence forms as is relatively normal and it should also be noted that other evidence was discovered in assessing this application, including the enclosure award which awarded it as a public bridle road. Obviously, we still have to go through the relative assessments as to whether or not that still holds, but it's usually considered fairly strong evidence. So in terms of this actual appeal, it's been made by the British Horse Society who are currently undergoing a national campaign of trying to seek out what we would call lost ways. So you recall from your training that there are a number of public rights away that are not recorded on the definitive map or have been created through usage post the definitive map coming into being, which is why we have our definitive map modification order process. You will also remember that the Deregulation Act seeks to apply a cut-off date for cases which rely on historical evidence, such as this one and the enclosure award. As a consequence, the British Horse Society nationally are looking at counties and are going through public records offices and trying to dig out cases which they feel justify inclusion on the definitive map so that they beat the cut-off date, as it were, and that they can still be processed. Whilst there was no particular need for them to re-apply because there is already an application for Belchford, they did feel that they felt that we could be dealing with this one out of turn and promoting it up the priority order. And as a consequence, they have made this application for appeal to yourselves and they've made it on a number of grounds. I think there's four grounds, five grounds, looking at it in total there. Oh no, six and seven, of which I'll go through them briefly now. Firstly, the application was made with user evidence, a decision was made, there was an objection and it's still not been completed. This is quite right, however, since our implementation of the prioritisation policy, it is not unusual for a number of these cases to be in that situation where we had made an order, an objection had been received and we didn't progress it further, which we probably should have done, but that was in a different age with different resources. They also mentioned that we have some dating errors, but that was erroneous site notice errors and it doesn't have an effect on the case itself, so it wouldn't necessarily cause any great problem. Their second point of appeal is that the route is poorly maintained and mature trees obstructing the route. That's not unusual, given that it's not recorded on the definitive map. We have no obligation to maintain it and so it's not unsurprising that after a number of years it has been overgrown and it's no longer really able to be used by the public at the current time. Should of course the order be confirmed and public rights recorded, then we would owe a duty of maintenance to this route because it predates 1959. Point three, that the enclosure map is conclusive evidence of the legal status of the route, that wouldn't be disputed, however, we still have to investigate whether or not the route was subsequently stopped up. For example, the enclosure awards would date back to the late 17, early 1800s and it's entirely feasible that there was some form of legal stopping up in the intervening period between then and now, whether it was done through the courts or through court sessions or so on. And we still have to make those investigations. We can't just take it as read that just something's on an enclosure map that it still continues to be a public highway now. However, more often than not, that would be the case. Point number four concerns the Rights Away Improvement Plan and our statement, which I will read out, to have an integrated network of rights away that is relevant for today's needs, bringing added benefits to residents and visitors by supporting wider interests, including sustainable transport, rural economy and tourism, health benefits and quality of life issues. We also state that the Rights Away Improvement Plan, that equestrians would have limited, do have limited access to off-road riding and are forced to use the road network for circular routes and links between routes are fragmented. The appeal goes on to state that equestrians often transport horses to find suitable routes if unavailable locally and according to Church et al. in 2010, over 90% of equestrians are women and 37% of these are over 45 years of age and over a third would pursue no other physical activity. So in normal terms, our Rights Away Improvement Plan, we do seek to obviously improve the situation for users. We would look to try and create connectivity for, you know, opportunities for circular walking, circular riding and so on. And it is true to say that there are fewer bridleways in Lincolnshire than there are footpaths, which I think you'd find that across the nation generally. However, it's not always the case that, you know, including one extra route is going to create a massive difference to the network. In this case, we think there might be some, but whether or not it would be significant enough to warrant upgrading a priority under the Rights Away Improvement Plan clause, we remain undecided and obviously that's now something for yourselves as the committee to determine. The appellant goes on to say that they feel that by reprioritising would benefit the local equestrians, walkers and cyclists. That would always be the case. If you're adding in a new route, you're always going to see benefit generally in terms of opportunity for people to be able to explore the countryside. It's whether or not it makes better linkages that would be well used as to whether or not we would consider it a more significant reason to upgrade the priority of a modification of the case under normal circumstances. And in points six and seven, they're again quoting from the Rights Away Improvement Plan, that we would look to develop a range of circular routes for cyclists and equestrians. Yes, we do and we have done. There isn't, well, there are circular equestrian routes in this area alongside the Lindsay Loop, which is a longer distance carriage driving route that also goes through that area. And the last statement of action of the Rowett that they identify as perhaps, oh no, there's another, crack, there's another, thank you pardon, that it would benefit the rights away network undeniably, you know, extra routes do benefit the network, it's whether or not it benefits it significantly enough. And we've always said in our Rowett that we would promote modification orders where connectivity was being improved, but it would have to be significantly improved. That's the key word, it's which is in the policy, is that it significantly, the route significantly contributes to a statement of action. The last point isn't of any relevance, it's about establishing a priority system for public path orders, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about definitive map modification orders. Public path orders are to deal with the creation, extinguishment and diversion of public rights away as opposed to the addition or removal based on evidence. You'll see that the remainder is the appendices, of which the main one to note on page 15 and onwards is our current prioritisation list. So as I was mentioning earlier, you will see that the top 31 cases as I scroll through, shaded slightly in red, if you can see that, comes through to the Greatham with Summerby case and then we have two cases ahead of this one here at Belchford, Linwood and Market Raisin and the one at Gainsborough which predate it. Actually, looking at this, the application was made in 1988. We probably started working late in 1990. So, you know, it is one of our older cases. It is very likely to be picked up in the nearest future, aside from any prioritisation. However, should you prioritise it, it would jump above the Gainsborough and Linwood Market Raisin cases and sit at that position below the red shaded ones which are ongoing. As I said earlier, we don't longer put things back in a cupboard. Once it's out of the cupboard and off an officer's desk, they will deal with it through to completion, however long that takes. And that, Chairman, is pretty much the nuts and bolts of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Very clear. How many statements were there for evidence?
In terms of those submitted by the public right at the outset?
Yeah.
Bear with me, Chairman, I'll have to go back to the right page to establish. We've only put in a number of, it could be any number. Karen, do you have any further detail on exactly how many we might have received?
No, I'm afraid I don't and I don't know whether they're footpath or bridleway use. What I would say is that in recent months, two members of the public have contacted me to ask what progress has been made. They're not horse riders and one isn't too worried because he's been given permission by the landowner to walk the route and I did explain the appeal process to both of those people, but neither of them have submitted an appeal.
Chairman, you will understand that we are slightly hamstrung in that we, when writing the report, I don't think Karen was able to go back into the office because of our current restrictions. So being able to go through every individual evidence form, we might add a number of them up and calculate them, how many we've got, might have been a difficulty there. But the fact is, we have a number. In terms of the evidence, as I've kind of already intimated, the enclosure award is usually considered quite strong primary evidence. If something was awarded as a public highway and there is no evidence of it ever being stopped up through any legal procedure and providing it was awarded and correctly set out at the time, as I say, in the late 1700s, early 1800s, then it would remain as a public highway now, regardless of the lack of use over maybe even 150 to 200 years. So we do have these cases where we will be putting back what we consider to be probably ancient, well, ancient in as much as it's, you know, older than me.
Chris, do we have a copy of the...
Sorry, Chairman, I didn't...
Do we have a copy of the...
Sorry, Chairman, your microphone appears to be scrambling everything.
I'm trying to find if we have a copy of the enclosure award itself, of the text of the award.
We will have it, it's been located in the Lincolnshire Archives where we go and assess it and we will transcribe the relevant elements of it, which will go in the report to the Secretary of State. As I mentioned, there is an objection to this order made many years ago, but that still stands and we can't just get it removed, we can't just ignore it. So we have to submit these to the Secretary of State, to the Planning and Spectre for assessment. So as part of what we do is we make sure that the Secretary of State and the Planning and Spectre have all the available evidence. So we make transcriptions of the relevant elements and take photographs of the mapping, if available, it's not always available, sometimes we only have the written description.
Okay. It appears that this is a professional officer of the British Horse Society who is seeking out old cases, as you said, in order to get them onto the tablet in good time. Are there likely to be others of this ilk from the British Horse Society for Karen Wintingham?
Probably in the, I don't want to put a figure on it really, but it could be hundreds. As you can imagine, Lincolnshire being a flat and agricultural county, we were one of the areas, Lindsay, Castrated and Holland, that were significantly subject to enclosure and enclosure awards. We know, as we see from getting all these applications, that there are a considerable number of routes that will have been left off the definitive map, they've just fallen out of use and then people had forgotten about them, that could be being added. As you can imagine, throughout the nation, there could be thousands and thousands of these, which is why the user groups, and it's not just the British Horse Society, obviously user groups such as the Ramblers are embarking on similar campaigns, although they haven't particularly focused on Lincolnshire like the BHS have. So yes, there could be a very significant number. And I know those of you who have been on this committee for a number of years will have heard me talk about the Deregulation Act and the cut-off date being a challenge for us when it is finally brought into legislative power, that we could be swamped by a good number of cases and obviously our resources are still finite and we will have to look at the priority system as to whether or not it's fit for purpose in those circumstances. It's something that Karen and I are very aware of and it's something we're actively looking at and keeping an eye on in terms of the national picture for the legislation involved.
That's okay, I was worried for a number of future applications whereby we prioritise something and then we'll be asked why we didn't prioritise. Tom, lovely to hear you. Would you like to speak and ask me a question, please? Tom Ashton, councillor Tom Ashton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. I wasn't much going to ask the question, I simply to contribute to the general debate when we get round to that. If this is a question, I'll hold on until we get to the debate.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Chris. I think we are just about to enter a debate on this and we're being charged as a group to agree whether we should prioritise this application. It currently is the third, if you like, number three in the list. I'm not absolutely clear what it will gain by being prioritised except for setting this precedent that we react to outward pressure, but we're also been, you know, we're on the back foot because it's over 30 years since the application was made. Chris, as the first contributor to the debate, can you tell me what difference prioritising this will make to the work we do on it, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Very little in real terms. As I say, the top 31 cases are being worked on at present and some of those will be close to conclusion or have already been submitted to the Secretary of State and are awaiting confirmation. So in the grand scheme of things, being like the third next down on the list really isn't very far. Given the grounds of appeal, which are mainly predicated on our statements in the Rights Away Improvement Plan, there is a possibility that, as you say, from a precedent point of view, if this one was upgraded, which if it did, as I say, it doesn't make a lot of difference for this case, the impact potentially on appeals for other submitted cases of a similar type that are only just being submitted now and under normal circumstances would be far lower down the priority system, probably down near the bottom on the date order of receipt, the precedent would have all been set that if they can see this kind of opportunity, then we could see more appeals of this type if we retain the priority system as it is, which is why I noted that there is a strong possibility that Karen and I will be reviewing and looking at, along with yourselves as our steering body almost, at the priority system and how we operate it. Because whilst date order of receipt is one method, it is not the only method and date order of receipt doesn't take into account the potential value of a route to the network and its connectivity therein and that's just, you know, a small part of it. Also, you know, where you, it doesn't take into account the potential number of users. If we got a blocked path, for example, on the edge of Lincoln, which was being developed for, just for argument's sake, with a house, then, you know, it might be that that ought to be being prioritised more swiftly, but that's a different opportunity through our current priority system that we might want to look at whether it might be actually a more important priority going forward. So I do think that our priority system is going to be reviewed, but for the purposes of this appeal and for this case, it probably won't make a lot of difference in terms of the time it takes for us to get round to it. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Hilton, councillor Spratt, did you want to speak on this one?
Thank you, Chairman. Sort of Chris has half covered the point I was going to make. It was a general comment about priorities and that's perhaps for the meeting that we have after this.
order of receipt doesn't take into account the potential value of a route to the network and its connectivity therein, and that's just, you know, a small part of it. Also, you know, where you, it doesn't take into account the potential number of users. If we got a blocked path, for example, on the edge of Lincoln, which was being developed for, just for argument's sake, with a house, then, you know, it might be that that ought to be being prioritised more swiftly, but that's a different opportunity through our current priority system that we might want to look at whether it might be actually a more important priority going forward. So I do think that our priority system is going to be reviewed, but for the purposes of this appeal and for this case, it probably won't make a lot of difference in terms of the time it takes for us to get round to it. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Hilton, councillor Spratt, did you want to speak on this one?
Thank you, Chairman. Sort of Chris has half covered the point I was going to make. It was a general comment about priorities and that's perhaps for the meeting that we have after this. But I've got a sympathy with this particular route and I will certainly vote for it. And I think the point was well made by yourself, Chair, that, you know, this has been ongoing for a long time. And so in a way, we are on, it's difficult because in a way we are on the back foot on it because it's been going on for a long time. And I, but then again, do we set a precedent? Well, I'm not sure that necessarily we do set. We're dealing with each of these cases as they come before us. And I think on balance, I would vote to increase it and get it done as quick as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Hilton. Tom, did you want to come back in?
Yes, yes, please, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. My, I appreciate the comments which have already been made and looking at the order of footpaths and things that are, that are the footpath byways, open door traffic and other claims that are in the system. We do have a cluster that are around the same vintage as this one, which are being worked through in the order that they are on the list according to the criteria that we already have to determine them by. I think in the papers that we've had, in the discussion that we've had so far, and in the presentation that we've had so far, anything that against the criteria which we as a subcommittee are obliged to make the decision, anything that really boots this one or gives us ground moves this one above those other applications, which are, as I say, from a similar sort of age of system. I mean, there's a process which the system obliges us to follow. And I'm sure the British Horse Society's aims in all of this are entirely laudable. Their campaign, as I understand it, is about getting applications onto our list, regardless whether it takes many, many, many years to process through all of them. But my understanding is that they have to be on the list before twenty twenty-six in order for them to be preserved, if they can be preserved, or reopened, if they can be reopened. My understanding further is that we don't have to have made a decision by twenty twenty-six, they simply have to be on the list. I appreciate this particular footpath has hung around for a long time, but there are half a dozen or more that have hung around for a similar length of time as this one and are coming up on the list. And I imagine on the, on the number that we get through per year, will probably be picked up in the next two or three years anyway. So I think the case has to be made for why are we promoting this particular case higher than the others? And what are our grounds for doing it? And I don't believe that we have grounds. I have every sympathy with the aim of the applicant. I have every sympathy with some of the people that are, you know, the case for getting these bridle ways and footpaths and byways open to all traffic opened back up again. It's interesting to note on page nineteen that there are applicants that have, that have died in the time that these applications have been around. But I feel we have to take them in order unless there are seriously good reasons for moving them up that order. And that's not based on what sympathy we have with the case, that's based on the criteria against which we can adjudicate. And for that reason, I would formally move that we dismiss the appeal and that the application is determined, sorry, we dismiss it to upgrade the priority of the modification case order than it is determined in the order of which it is on the list at present. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Very well made argument. Slightly, it creates a slight tension between your formal movement and Hilton's suggestion that he would like to see this moved. Hilton, do you just want to come back on that for a second before we seek a second to Tom's motion?
I've got no action to grind on this. I made the point, but as Tom reiterated in a way, though I just read about that, that this has been going for a number of years and I have nothing else to add to what you said, Chairman, it's a question of politics for both and I have to vote accordingly. Thank you.
Chris, it looks like you'd like to say something. Chris, are we waiting for you to speak?
Chris, you're on mute. Chris, remove your re-
If Chris comes back in in the next minute, then we'll allow him an opportunity to respond. I'd like to take Tom's formal movement that we do not prioritise this, the thinking being there is no special case made by the British Horse Society, no outstanding event, no one's going to build a housing estate over the trackway in the short time, and it will receive absolutely minimal benefit by being prioritised over its position where it currently is, but will send a very bad message that we're just responding to someone who's shouting loudly at the moment. So I would be happy to second Tom's, I don't know if the chair can second things, but if Tom has made a proposal, I'm happy to second it, that we do not respond positively to this appeal, that we just leave things as they are.
Chairman, I'm back online. Apologies, my laptop froze just as I was trying to speak, which is typical. Can you hear me now?
Chris, we can hear you now. Did you hear what I just said?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much. I just couldn't speak or type.
Okay, so currently we have a proposer and a second. We'll let you speak and then to everyone else and then we'll go to the vote.
Sure. All I was wanting to do was just respond to councillor Ashton's statement about the process prior to twenty twenty-six and the cut-off date. Councillor Ashton is quite right that provided that an application has been duly made before the cut-off date and has been registered by us, it will save that route from extinguishment on the first of January twenty twenty-six, as it's currently pencilled in. And then it won't matter how long it takes us to deal with it, the fact is that those rights won't have been extinguished. Anything that hasn't been applied for by then will have been extinguished unless one of a number of saving criteria might be applied. But as you know, we don't know what those saving criteria may be yet. So yes, the British Horse Society scheme is to make sure that things are registered. So we were, I have to say, we were a little surprised that we got an appeal as well, particularly for something that was already quite a way up the list. But yeah, that's totally up to them. They may have some other good reasons why they wish to see it upgraded. Looking through their, the points that they made within the report, their main one is the significant benefit it will bring, as we say, we would prioritise those ones under the rights of way improvement plan. But it's the question is, will it bring significant benefit? Which is why I was bringing up on the shared screen a picture of the map location. Bear with me, Chairman, there we go. So you can see where it sits in relation to other bridle ways. There are other bridle ways in the area, so it's not that it's going to significantly increase the number of available opportunities, it's whether or not it creates a better circular network perhaps and the connectivity that it might provide, should it be available for use. So I think really that's the thrust of their appeal. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. It does look that it would form an attractive route. So I, we've got a proposal on the table that we do not prioritise this, but I understand from you that you and your team will be working hard on this, so they're not disadvantaged by us not prioritising, I believe. Steve, are you okay to take a vote on a roll call, please?
Yes, certainly, Chairman. If we are obviously moving, or councillor Tom Ashton has moved that the appeal be dismissed in two seconds, we'll take the formal vote, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve.
Right, if members could please indicate for against, and I'll read out your name. Councillor Tom Ashton.
Four.
Councillor David Balesford.
Abstain.
Councillor Lindsay Corrie.
Four.
Councillor Ian Fleetwood. Councillor Colin Thackus.
Four.
And councillor Hilton Spratt.
Did you get that?
No, I didn't get it, Hilton, sorry.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Did you get that?
Yes, I did, thank you. So that's three, four, Chairman, not against and two abstentions. So councillor Ashton's motion is carried.
Thank you. I'll confirm that I understand that councillor Ashton's motion is carried. I think the way the voting is split indicates that this is an area that in our informal meeting, we need to be taking guidance from Chris on how we, as a county council, can prioritise actions to get some of these longstanding cases resolved. But I think in this case, this is the right decision. Okay. There is no other business on the formal meeting. So I'd like to thank you all very much for attending. Steve and Chris, you're okay to respond to that applicant now?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. We are going to have an informal meeting. I'm going to stay on the line, but if we can say we can kick off again the informal meeting in five minutes, that will be good. Anyone who wants to join us. One of the things we'll be talking about in the informal meeting is other members' individual sort of wishes and views about footpaths, but basically Chris is going to brief us on the potential, not the potential role, but the potential future for this committee as government legislation comes to pass. Thanks ever so much.
Chairman, you'll need to come out of this meeting and that's an announcement for all members, they'll need to come out of this meeting and rejoin the informal meeting after they've come out of this meeting.
Thank you, Steve. Can I suggest that we have the informal meeting starting eleven thirty then, please? Can you send a new invitation, Steve?
Yes, we do, Chairman.
All right, thanks.